We're hearing you. We can hear you, Susan.
Thank you. Good. We lost.
So I'm gonna go ahead and run down the whole list of folks for the sake of our minute taker and and I will call out those of you that I know for sure and who you're with. Just need a I or here or present as we're going along, please.
And Kelly, maybe at the same time, if anybody is is a proxy, any regular members, active members or proxies? For anyone else, they can note that also at that time.
Yeah, I didn't. I don't see any. Ross, I guess. Susan Mullenow will be a proxy for Ross. And that's the only one that I've seen is in the email anyways.
Okay.
Oh, and Terry's here, too. You just don't see him.
Okay.
You see me?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just gonna go ahead and run down this list. Lejean Hayman with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Here.
John Knight.
Here.
Tara Jones with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Here.
Brian Taylor with Trinity River Lumber Company and Corral Creek Timber.
Yes, and yes, Joe Miller and Peter Geist as well.
I'm sorry, Joe Miller and who?
Heather Geist.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's see, Larry Glass.
Sir.
Gina Glenn with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Here and present.
Jennifer Mata with the Bureau of Land Management.
Good morning.
Kristen Lark with Six Rivers National Forest.
Good morning, everybody.
Ozley Welsh Welsh with Trinity County Resource Conservation District.
Good morning.
Astrid Dobbo with Post Mountain VFD.
Good morning.
Morning, Astrid. Dan Ossman with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning.
Kathy Mick with Six Rivers National Forest.
Good morning.
Carrie Otto with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning.
Tom Waltz.
Here.
Lois Schumacher with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning.
Randy Paris with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning.
Arnold Whitridge.
Here.
Susan Bauer.
Good morning.
Joseph Bauer.
Here.
Good morning. Jerry Cousins.
I'm here. Good morning.
Dylan Sheedy. With Watershed Training Center.
Yeah, here.
Nick Goulet with the Watershed Research and Training Center.
Here.
Christine Jordan with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
I'm here.
Chris Losi with the Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Good morning.
Okay. Susan Mullenow.
Here.
Bob Morris. Did I get Bob Morris? Diane and Terry Sheen.
Here.
Here.
Kenneth Baldwin.
Here.
Go down the list here. James Cartwright.
Yeah, I'm on the fuels program manager on the Shasta Trinity.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, James. And Jerry Cousins. I already got you. Sorry. Jeremy Brown. I was Trinity County Supervisor District Four.
Here.
Ted MacArthur. With Six Rivers National Forest and I guess temporarily with the Shasta Trinity National Forest.
That's right. Good morning.
Morning, Ted. And I believe if there's anybody else that I've missed, you please speak up.
Hi, this is Rob Winkler with the Bureau of Land Management.
Hi, Rob. Sorry, I missed you. I renamed you and I missed you in the list here. Is there anybody else for the good of the order at the moment? Do you believe that's it? Thank you, everybody, and welcome this morning. Take it away, Pat.
I'm coming back. So Pat Pross is here with Arnold and Sydney, and they keep wanting to go in and out of the house.
And and for those of you that don't know, I'm Kelly Sheen. I'm the district manager for the Trinity County Resource Conservation District and along with Pat, Trinity County Collaborative Group Facilitator.
Yeah. Okay, so kind of quick other things. When Kelly said when we sent out the notice for this in the agenda, there was the collective memory from January 15th, so if anybody has anything substantial that they need added edited change in some way, please let us know. You can do that, you know, either here or just with an email to Kelly or myself.
Or in the chat.
Excuse me, Pat, not about the memory, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. You sound very muffled. Does anyone else have that experience?
Likewise.
Yeah, it's a little crackly.
Okay, I'll try my best. It's probably my it's probably just my internet connection today. I didn't want to yell because I thought Kelly would get on me.
Sounds, Pat, like you're almost too close to your microphone. That's
Yeah.
It might be the beard.
It could be the beard.
Don't say that.
Anyway, is that any better?
No.
Yeah, well, I think you can you can speak a little bit more in a normal tone or be a little bit further away from the mic. I think you'd be all right.
Okay, so how about now? Okay. So agenda check. So are there any items that are not on the agenda that need to be on the agenda?
I would like to go back to the collective memory.
Oh, sure.
This is Joseph. I was looking for the revised fuel breaks, fire, kill the fuel breaks white paper. And I wanted to see how it was actually revised and sent on to the Forest Service. And it wasn't posted in the collective memory. Can we get a copy of what actually went forward?
Yes, I will forward that after this meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, I thought I did that, but I will be sure to send it out again.
Pat, could I say a thing? This is Arnold.
Sure. Go for it, Arnold.
So I'm sorry to remain invisible. Once again, the Zoom cuts me off as soon as they turn on my camera, so I'm in have to stay invisible. I was thinking in the collective memory, there ought to be a note at the top to the effect that Scott Russell had retired and Ted is replacing him for however long he's replacing him. Otherwise, people that try and follow along as a historical reference will become confused and perhaps annoyed by the abrupt change.
I can I can make that.
Unexplained change.
Yeah.
I can make that revision, Arnold.
Good. So any other collective memory memories? Bob?
Nope.
No? Okay. Okay, so on to an agenda check. Are there items that need to be added to the agenda that we forgot? I mean, I'll have to say that I put an email out asking for agenda items from the agencies. Didn't get much feedback, so I was kind of winging it.
I I'm interested to find out what the contents are of the letter that's that we're supposed to approve today to go to Vilsack.
There is there is no content. The idea of this agenda item was for was for you all to potentially help guide what that content would be.
Thank you.
How about Kelly, Christine? Did we need to add something on the Northern Spotted Owl Habitat?
Oh, there was a request that that be added to the agenda as of the last meeting. Is that something you can do for us, Christine, today?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, we'll kind of are you you available for the entire meeting, Christine?
I plan. Yes, Pat, I plan to be here for the full extent of the meeting.
So we'll we'll kind of shoot it in when we can.
Sounds good.
Public input. So we actually have today lots of people who are not active members of the collaborative. Members of the public. So this is an opportunity for you to kind of add some input, ideas, thoughts you might have that you think the collaborative might take up. So is there anybody that has anything they want to add at this point? No? Going, going on.
Uh, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
This is super bad.
Go ahead.
Are we are we discussing, and forgive me if I overlooked it, the TPD line expansion clearance and stuff? Is that?
No. It's not. That's not on the agenda. I think that there was a presentation at the last meeting.
Yes.
No, no agenda item for this meeting.
Okay.
And I don't I don't see anybody from the PUD on the call.
Okay, that's the only thing that some constituents have reached out to me about lately that I think would be applicable for if there was going to be further discussion from the collaborative. But if there's not further discussion or interest from the collaborative's perspective, then I'm not worried about talking about it.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't get after the presentation, we didn't get any requests for follow up. So I took that to mean no further action on the part of the collaborative at this point.
Okay, I'm pretty sure that TPD will also be doing a presentation for the Board of Supervisors in April. So I imagine that's a good opportunity for the public to check out if they have concern.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, so one item that the facilitation team decided to put on the agenda is this next item that Nick is going to cover, which is legislation to expand the Sierra Nevada Conservancy into Trinity County. And so don't have a lot of time, but hopefully Nick can kind of get to the the nuts and bolts of it, and it's a potential agenda voteable item, action item, if somebody sees any need for that. Take it away, Nick.
Okay, thanks. My audio working?
Yes.
And you Great. So Senate Bill 208, so a California Senate bill to expand the boundaries of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, including the Upper Trinity River Watershed, so that which flows into Trinity Lake and from which water is conveyed down to the Central Valley. So just a part of Trinity County. The background on this bill, I think it's it was held last year in committee, so it was introduced last year and is essentially getting reconsideration this year. The bill was introduced by Senator Dolly, who is not our senator here in Trinity County, but who does have interest and was trying to formulate a bill that could receive broad political support and clear the bar and get to the governor's signature. So Sierra Nevada Conservancy background on the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, it is a state agency that exists within the Natural Resource Agency. Its geographic boundaries from its charter were basically focused primarily on the Sierra Nevada Mountains, but expand up to the Modoc Plateau and take in part of Siskiyou County. So it has this sort of broader geography than just the Sierra Nevada right from its inception. And what the Sierra Nevada Conservancy does is that they deliver essentially technical services and grants to help support natural resource stewardship in the Sierra Nevada in in the geography in which they're chartered, basically. And the way that ends up hitting the ground is through a set of regional coordinators they have and through granting programs that they utilize that that make grants to nonprofits, tribes, resource conservation districts for all the sort of work that the Trinity County Collaborative Group has been sort of interested in and supporting everything from forest and sort of fire resilience, watershed, fisheries, restoration habitats, enhancements, recreation, and the aligned kind of economic and workforce development that that we see. So and the way that's played out over the, I think, 15 years they've been in existence now is that they capture periodic bond funding and also sometimes receive annual appropriations to basically make grants and provide this kind of technical support. The Sierra Nevada Conservancy region has been privy to hundreds of millions of dollars grant funding that we've not had access to in Sierra in Trinity County because we don't fall within the bounds of a of a similar conservancy, a state conservancy. And so the proposition in this bill is basically to expand the conservancy boundary to the rest of Siskiyou County and to wrap in just the Trinity, the Upper Trinity River Watershed, basically within Trinity County. There's some logic around why that makes sense from a, you know, funding standpoint that I don't want to go too deep into. I think the bottom line is the proposal is not to expand it to all of Trinity County. It's just to that part that sends the water down to the valley. But given given the sort of upsides, which is basically we would that part of Trinity County would qualify for additional grant funding that they don't currently qualify for and have sort of been left out of for quite a long time now. They'll receive additional technical assistance from Sierra Nevada Conservancy staff who have really excellent expertise in all of the topic areas that the conservancy focused on that I discussed before. To me, I don't really see a downside in this. They're not a regulatory agency. They're really a grant making and technical assistance agency promoting stewardship, natural resources, and aligned community development. So really, really well aligned with what the collaborative group has been promoting and could focus some money and energy in the upper watershed where we, you know, not invested in as much over time and both on private lands and on federal lands. So that's that's really the the gist of it. And I think the interest is in having a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors for the bill that that helps to, you know, indicate our support and helps to improve the political viability as it gets to the end of session when they start voting on bills in in June. So any questions off the top? Discussion?
Nick, do you see some downside of this?
I don't see any downside to it. I think that the other context to understand is that the there's a group called the North Coast Resource Partnership that is also a regional entity, but not a state agency that has some potential to also deliver the kind of bond funding and sort of appropriations that that Sierra Nevada Conservancy has historically delivered. Their geographies will overlap in the Upper Trinity River Watershed. It really just, I think, is going to create sort of synergy and funding and maybe even opportunities to sort of just overall expand funding in that region from future kind of regional funding pools that the state is really seriously considering right now. I can't really see a down. I mean, the downside I see is that it doesn't cover the whole county. But I don't think that there's a I don't think there's a an appetite for adding the whole county. So I think we're sort of the proposal as it is, is what we have in front of us right now, and it's sort of supporter, not sport. We could sort of say that we'd like the whole county included, but it's unlikely that this bill would be amended to accomplish that, although I don't think it would be any downside for the Trinity County Board of Supervisors to say, yes, we think this is a good idea and you should consider adding the whole county. It just doesn't. It just doesn't seem likely, given their current rationale.
Nick, I have a question. This is Jerry. So do they issue RCDs for their grants and what kind of work do their grants typically fund?
Yeah, so yes, they do. They're all they're almost exclusively competitive grants. I think they have the ability to do sort of block grants, so non-competitive grants in some instances, but there's a whole process state, you know, mandated process by which they do that kind of thing. But yeah, most of their funding is competitive. It's based upon whatever the funding source is. So if they get some new money from a new, let's say, climate resilience bond, they would package up a program that was focused on, you know, resilient carbon in forests, let's say, and in wetlands and meadows, and then they would do a request for proposals. We would qualify for, you know, a small fraction of their total sort of funding pool, but I think they would generally intend and they always do sort of spread their money around their entire region. They have it broken up into subregions. We would become part of their kind of northern, you know, and sort of subregion. And yet they would they would do request for proposals. Again, like the kinds of projects could be everything from like roadside thinning to large sort of landscape sort of thinning to prescribed fire to road, you know, sediment reduction, meadow restoration, recreation enhancement, you know, to be and economic development related to those things. So it really depends a lot on the color of money.
Do you have a sense of how big a budget they put out annually for grants?
It varies a lot because it's been coupled to bonds. And so they don't get they haven't gotten a sort of steady annual appropriation from from the state, but their typical allocation from like, let's say, the water bond, like Proposition 1, you know, would be in the tens of millions of dollars for the whole Sierra Nevada Conservancy. Sometimes I think Prop 68, another recent bond, they had well over $100 million in funding that they distributed through grants. So you know, the the grant size here is going to be, you know, rivaling some of the other typical programs that we go after, like, you know, Joint Chiefs and the California Climate Investments or Forest Health Grants and Fire Prevention Grants that CalFire lets right now. So we're talking about, you know, grants grants that are minimum sort of several tens of thousands, more typically over 100,000. You know, multi-year sort of funding and planning grant.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question? Terry Sheen has a question.
What, Terry?
So the Upper Trinity is, my understanding is Timber Products now owns all that property, the odd sections. And they should be attending these meetings, I think, since it affects their property. Thank you.
Okay, so anybody else?
And just to be clear, it covers it covers the entirety of the geography that flows into the lake, so not just the sort of headwaters there, up the IP sort of Stewart Springs Road. It's it's the entirety, including Coffee Creek, you know, including Scott Mountain, including the east side of the lake. And all the way, you know, down to the Trinity Center. Bowerman, you know, everything that flows into the lake.
If Sierra Pacific is present, they would know, you know, where that what they sold off to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, does the Sierra Nevada Conservancy fund projects only on private land or do they allow projects on federal land also?
They allow projects on federal land also.
So, okay. So anybody else? Any other thoughts or comments? Any suggestions? So I just want to take a moment and kind of kind of take off my facilitator hat and say, look into all these boxes with people's names. I may be the only person on this Zoom meeting who actually lives in the upper watershed. And so some thoughts from somebody up here. So certainly one thing that that, you know, I saw over the many years with the RCD and even since then is getting funding for projects above the dams, whether it be watershed-related projects or forestry projects, has always been a challenge. On the watershed side of things, of course, the the challenge was that it's no longer the streams are no longer anadromous. So in in, you know, water board and fish, cowfish and wildlife, you know, perspectives, they're a low priority. The watershed above the dam is a low priority. So having an opportunity that kind of balances that out a little bit would be to our advantage. You know, certainly, there's always, you know, for someone like me, a little bit of an undercurrent of concern when the state senator representing the Upper Sacramento River Valley you know, has taken an interest, that kind of interest in the area above the dam. And I worry that somewhere in the future, it becomes a maximize water yield kind of program, but that's a really minor thing to me compared to the advantages that we would get of funding from these various state sources. So it's something I think to always think about, you know, to be aware of, you know, that there's that dynamic, especially when we're in droughty kind of conditions like we are this year. But anyway, two cents worth from somebody who lives on Greenhorn Gulf of the East Fork of Stewart's Fork of the Trinity River.
And make a motion. We recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they support the inclusion of at least the opportunity in the bill.
Okay, so we have a motion. You have a second?
Yep, Joseph seconded.
Okay, so Arnold was the motion and Joseph to second. Any further discussion? Bob?
Nope.
Okay. If no further discussion, I guess. Let's see, is it easy?
I'll just do a roll call vote.
Do a roll call and not just a roll call of anybody who's opposed?
Well, I guess we could do that. Yes.
Is there anybody?
Any voting members that oppose this?
Terry Sheen, I'm opposed. I'd like to have Timber Products input.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, so I'm thinking the motion passes and collective memory will note Kerry's opposition. And Jeremy, so we'll need to work with you on, actually, we got to draft a letter. Nick, I'm hoping maybe you can help draft the letter, being you're more familiar with the topic. And we'll need to work with Jeremy on getting it scheduled for a Board of Supervisors meeting. Is there a sense of urgency urgency, Nick? Is it like scheduled for a vote?
You know, it was part of a hearing a couple of weeks back now, so it's not it's not scheduled for a vote right now. I think we there's not huge urgency, but you know, if we could if we could do something in the next month, we'd be good.
Okay.
And the contacts.
Maybe we could target no later than the second meeting in April. That would be the 13th of April, right, I think?
I think the 20th. The second meeting would be so if you can have the information to me, ideally between like the 13th or the 15th, 13th, 14th, something like that, or sooner. I can help get it onto the agenda and everything. If you send me all the attachments and and I don't know if you'd want to do the staff report or if you'd want to come and do a a presentation with the request of a assigned letter or something like that.
Yeah. Okay, Nick, doable?
Doable. Yep. We'll do a letter and we can talk about what you want to do for the presentation. Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Nick, for leading that discussion. So next, speaking of letters, next thing up, so I actually after, or even around the time that Secretary Vilsack was being renominated to be Secretary of U.S. Department of Agriculture, a number of members of the a number of members of this collaborative said, wouldn't it be great if we send him a welcome back, you know, to the, to the, to the USDA? And don't forget, you know, we're still plugging away here in Trinity County kind of letter. So I put it on the agenda. I've got no um preconceived ideas of what that letter should include. Um, is it a letter that's being sent by the collaborative, a letter that most likely, I guess, would be sent by the Board of Supervisors? Um, just, a- and I'm looking for suggestions and or, in this case, maybe even a couple of members who have interest in it in helping to craft the letter. So that's, that's, that's the extent of my agenda item, so people's thoughts.
Well, I would.
Go ahead, Joseph, then Jerry.
I would suggest that uh we speak to the issue of the Dex Deputy Secretary. Uh, uh, ask him to have his Deputy Secretary uh facilitate or uh help us in our achieving our goals here so that he, again, sets up a relationship like we had with Robert Bonney so that we have some access to the person that can influence the Forest Service for us.
Okay, Jerry?
Well, I I kind of put out the idea, first of all, as a tongue-in-cheek kind of a horseshit idea. But the more I thought about it, you know, it might be a good thing to uh connect back with him. And I also suggested that we invite him for breakfast. For those who weren't around, uh, Vilsack came out to Trinity County and invited a group of people for a breakfast here. Yeah. So uh, I just thought it might be a good thing to uh tell him all the good, bad, and ugly in all the years uh that he's not been around and see if we can, again, tap his, tap him for as a resource. And I'd be willing to work on the letter if the collaborative approves moving forward with the idea.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I was thinking that we ought to uh dig up some photographs of his visit to Trinity County and remind him because, you know, operating at the level he's operating at, he not even remember ever coming here. It might be nice to send him a photograph and give him a little recap of our involvement with him in the past.
A proof of concept, huh, there?
Yeah.
Okay. We can probably dig around and find some photos. Bob?
Well, Joseph here again. Uh, another thing that we might mention in that letter is the shortage of staff for the Forest Service, especially geologists that uh make it difficult to move a project ahead in any reasonable time. We might cite the pilot project as an example. And so he realizes that uh, you know, we have some shortcomings in the agency that need to be corrected for us to move forward in a timely way.
Okay.
Well, I I think, this is Jerry, I think there's all kinds of details we can make decisions on. I'm just wondering if there's a consensus from the collaborative to move forward with the letter.
So.
I would so move.
Okay, so a motion from Joseph, second from?
Larry.
From Larry Glass. Okay, a motion to second, additional discussion. So again, I'm assuming a a actually a letter from the Board of Supervisors, because that's kind of our modus operandi.
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Um, I agree with Terry Sheen that um the Timber Products should uh be notified because it is private property, and that would be stomping on their private property and restrictions and whatnot that might come to them. So they need to know.
This is in reference to the previous motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's, and it, it's, he asked for additional.
So we've moved on to a new letter, which is the letter to Secretary Vilsack.
Yeah, but that would be part of it, too.
It'll be in two different, two different letters. So we can certainly, we can certainly reach out to um other, other major landowners in the upper basin about the first item.
Thank you.
So is Terry, Jerry in charge of coordinating the input from the collaborative members? And then we bring it back and get it approved and send it on? Is that how it can work?
Um. If you guys would be comfortable with it, you know, I wouldn't mind working with Jerry and anybody can feed their thoughts to Jerry and we kind of uh put a, get a draft put together and just make it available to people to look at online before we take it to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that. Uh, I don't think there's any rush.
No.
And thanks, Larry.
So we have a motion and a second. Any, any other discussion? If not, uh, how do you want to do the, is I get, can we do the, is there anybody opposed?
Same thing, any of, any opposition to the, to the motion?
And the the motion is to craft a letter for the Board of Supervisors to send to Secretary Vilsack welcoming, welcoming them back. Anybody opposed? Okay, so I would say this was approved by unanimous consent. Uh, next thing, an agenda item that actually the, the information has changed since the last time we had something on the rack update. And I think I would turn this over to Lejon if he's still on the call.
Good morning. Uh, yeah, uh Tara Jones is on the call as well. She's our DFO. Uh, for those who are not aware, for the Trinity County uh rec, uh she's asked me to give a brief update. Um, so currently, our candidate slate has been approved. So we have fifteen members uh that have been approved. We are going to go ahead and have a meet and greet this coming Monday to orient those uh members and uh figure out how we're going to move forward with uh doing official FRN uh meetings in the future. Um, that is where we are currently. Uh, Pat asked me earlier if I will send out a list of those candidates and the um, the interest group that they represent. So I will do that after this meeting. Uh, any questions?
So just for clarifications for folks that are not accustomed to um our acronyms, DFO is Designated Federal uh Official. That's the agency person who has to manage this group of uh volunteers. And uh the other acronym was Represented the uh Federal Register Notice. So that for to have these kind of official meetings that comes under the Federal Advisory Committee Act. And so you have to actually advertise in the federal register that you're having the meetings.
I have a question. Is there any uh funds available in this fiscal year?
Yes, uh currently, we were, there was appropriations for, I believe it was two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty. The two thousand and nineteen funds have been, uh, we have those, access to that right now. Um, and in the near future, we should expect the two thousand and twenty funds to uh to arrive as well. Uh, I I won't give an exact figure right now. Uh, we're still working through um those uh, those numbers. Uh, but I'll be able to provide that uh at the first official uh rack meeting.
So just, Joseph, just that, you know, from from an unofficial point of view and somebody who's been kind of watching the rack process for all these years, my recollection from, this was approved in the reauthorization, the two-year reauthorization in the omnibus bill in two thousand and eighteen after the government shutdown. And my, my vague recollection is there's somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand for each of those two years, give or take a chunk of change, because you'll recall, the Forest Service takes office a a bit to do the management of it, and that's everything, too.
Those figures sound uh similar, but uh I I'll have official numbers uh a- at that first uh meeting. Um, uh, yeah, so uh any, any other questions? Uh, anyone has?
Are the fifteen of members all residents of Trinity County?
I'll have to go back through the list. Uh, I I, I believe so, uh, at least the the majority would be. Um, but let me go back uh through that list before I answer that. I I don't have that in front of me at this moment.
Okay, any other questions for Lejon or for Tara? No. So we're doing great on our time frame this morning. So uh, thank you Le- Lejon for giving us that update. And thankfully, we'll finally get the rack rocking and rolling again. So that's really great. And it's not, you know, it's more than budget dust. I mean, it, you know, it'll, 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 it'll get some work done. Um, so next up on the agenda, and at at this point, I'm also going to give you all an apology that I have to kind of sign off at eleven for another call that I need to take representing the Trinity Center Volunteer Fire Department on a grant that we have from the state. And I gotta, I gotta be with the state people at eleven o'clock. So if I disappear for a while, that's uh, that's why. But uh, we're now at, we're ahead of schedule, but the next thing on the agenda was the BLM update. So I think we have Jennifer and uh other of her staff, I think. Um, so take it away, Jennifer.
Good morning. Hopefully, this is going to work okay. I had to jump off my computer and onto my cell phone since my internet is being particular this morning. Um, so just a couple of updates from um the BLM before I turn it over to Rob and the RCD to talk about a project-specific presentation. Um, as you guys are well aware, we're in the beginning stages of updating our resource management plan. Um, we started a few years ago and then took a pause after the car um and campfires, but now are gearing back up for that. Um, and so the next kind of large uh step in the process is for us to have some virtual public meetings to just gather information um from the public about things that they might be interested in and what um they would like us to consider that has changed um since we started this, the kind of last go-around and ended in um twenty nineteen. So um those meetings will be getting you more specific information, um but they will be virtually held. There'll be two meeting dates, the week of April twelfth, um, two meeting times, so different, different times that week. Um, and then also the week of April nineteenth as well, um, to make it um accessible for people. Um, we will also have a virtual website where people can go on ahead of time and take a look at the information that is contained there. Um, and recognizing, um, just like I'm having issues with the internet, um, today, there will be an option for people to call in um just over the phone to participate in those public meetings if they don't have the internet capacity to do so. Uh, and they can also submit uh comments uh by email or hard copy, um, if the online uh format doesn't work for people. So this is just, uh, will be the first step for us. We'll have some more standardized public scoping meetings as we get further along. But this is just to gather some preliminary information as we start back into the process. So kind of a pre-scoping um public meeting. Uh, and then really, the only other thing for us, other than the fuels things that Rob will talk about, um, is we are still soliciting for campground hosts on the Trinity side for the summer. Um, so looking for campground hosts for Junction City, um, as well as Steel Bridge. So if anybody has any contacts or knows of anyone who might be interested, um, if you could reach out to me and let me know, that would be amazing. And I think that's it. If there's any questions, I will be here.
Thank you, Jennifer. So Rob, go ahead. Any questions for Jennifer?
Before we jump into this next portion, uh, with the Little Browns Creek Fuel Reduction Project, that was primarily, I think, going to be presented, if I'm not mistaken, by um Amelia Flights. Uh, and she is on another Fire Safety Council-related meeting until eleven thirty. Unless Rob, you know, specifically has anything else to report out, um, I think we should probably skip ahead to the Forest Service updates.
Yeah, it's fine for me.
Thanks, Rob.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say one thing. I'm very appreciative of the work the RCB crews are doing on BLM land adjacent to my property out on Indian Creek. They're doing a great job.
Rob, obviously, maybe you want to talk about that, that, that particular uh project real quick?
Sure, some of the work uh we have ongoing in Reading Indian Creek, um, it's been uh implemented through um multiple sources, so uh BLM Fuels Crew, um, BLM specific contracts, uh partnerships with CalFire, and then most recently, and the efforts going on today, this week, um, are through the Trinity County RCD in uh continuing some of that fuels reduction work. So uh mid-canopy treatment, um, just hand, hand-cut and pile. Um, they're focused on an additional fifty acres. Um, and that adjoins our recent accomplishments that are around a hundred and fifty acres. So uh linking some things together there in Reading Indian Creek um for larger contiguous uh treatment areas. So pretty, pretty successful. I'm really, really happy with the progress out there. Um, especially uh, you know, implementation from the RCD. So really excited about it, um, and hope to, hope to continue. That's the update there for Reading Indian Creek. Thanks.
Oh, great. So, yeah, I think, Kelly, that unless Ozley has anything else to add on to Rob's update.
Uh, I guess the only thing I would add is also a thank you to the Fish and Wildlife Service. The funding is that the RCD crews that we're using right now out there is through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And that's um pass-through funding from BLM and the um US Fish and Wildlife Service. So we are also really grateful to our partners um to, for the funding to be able to do this work with BLM and obviously grateful to BLM, too. So, yeah, um, and yeah, I think if we could wait till eleven thirty, till Amelia gets there, I think that'd be great, and we can do our presentation then.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Oz. Thanks, Rob.
So Kelly, I'm going to turn it over to you as I sign out and go to my other, other meeting and uh leave it to, don't forget, we'll sneak in Christine at some point.
Um, yeah, uh, why don't we go ahead and do that now? Christine, would that be okay?
Yes, that is more than okay. Um, hi, everybody. Sorry that my camera also does not function too well with our funky internet here where I'm at. Um, but hopefully you can all hear me okay. Um.
You're coming through.
Give a little bit. So I want to clarify, the, the request for the agenda item for me to speak to uh pertains to the revised critical habitat for the northern spotted owl. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So just a little bit of history um for you all. In August of two thousand twenty, a proposed rule to exclude about two hundred and four um thousand, well, two hundred and four thousand six hundred and fifty-three, to be exact, acres of critical habitat up in Oregon on ONC lands uh was published in the federal register. Uh, we, at the service here in Myrica, we primarily work with the Shasta Trinity um and the Klamath National Forests, as well as Redding BLM, um, and Whiskey Town. Um, we were sharing the information with those agencies at our Level One meetings uh regarding the, the proposed rule and the background of that and why. Um, and we were sharing that in two thousand nineteen and throughout. And we were sharing that in 2019 and throughout 2020 as we learned more. Just to let them know, you know, we don't think this is going to change anything on Forest Service or BLM lands here in California. So we were having that, you know, frequent communication based on what we knew. So then in January, on January 15th, which was our last collaborative meeting. A rule was published in the federal register. That essentially removed about 3.5 million acres from designation. And it included additional areas in Oregon as well as areas of California and Washington. So it went beyond what the proposed rule had basically disclosed. That rule, that January 15th rule wouldn't have been effective until March 16th. There was a 60 day, you know, effectiveness period put on it. In late January, an administrative freeze was placed on that rule. As well as other rules and not yet effective rules as well as effective rules. So to bring us up to the current. Conditions on Monday, March 1st. Another notice was published in the federal register that extended the effective date of the January 15th rule. To April 30th, 2021. That notice also opened up a 30 day public comment period regarding issues. Around fact, law and policy that were raised by the revised January rule. And, and also. To inquire from the public whether further delay of the effective date is necessary. So public comments should be received or postmarked by March 31st, 2021. Currently, we are all utilizing the current 2012, 2012 designation of critical habitat. Owl in all of our analyses, including the August complex phase one. As well as the pilot roads and plantations project and other projects that we're working on. And consulting with. The action agencies. So the Portland Fish and Wildlife Office up in region nine is the species and critical habitat. So they've basically been the lead on overall, you know. Agency outreach and answering questions. But if anyone's got any questions or if none of that was clear, I'd be happy to, you know, try to address anything you might have. And Gina, I don't know if you wanted to say anything in addition to.
No, I think you covered it, Christine. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I've got a question for Christine.
Go ahead, John.
Somewhat off topic, but owl related. Can you say something about. The threats to the owl from the barred owl. As, as well as the threats to the owl from fire.
There, I'm unmuted. I, I can. So. There's eight. Under the Northwest Forest Plan and even prior to that, there were several demographic study areas throughout the range. There are eight of them where data is collected annually through mark recapture. And survey, you know, basically the, the six visit survey protocol, sometimes a modified pre-visit. Certain of those eight study areas, the one that we do have here in California is the Northwestern. California Study Area that's administered mostly by the University of Minnesota now with. Frank, Alan Franklin and Peter Carlson, but that covers an area there near Willow Creek as well as. Down into areas around Hayfork, Leightonville and then up, you know, onto the Klamath as well. But from those eight study areas. Annual data comes out in reports about declines and increases in barred owls. And the latest one was published in 2016, January 2016. You know, basically stating that the biggest threat, you know, to the NSO population overall is barred owl. I don't, I'm sure that you probably are aware of that, John, but that's just the, the latest summary and we're expecting. The next meta-analysis sometime this year. Those trends over time with those reports is basically showing a 3% decline, you know, of the species on an annual basis. And then for fire, yes, our, our fires and our climate, you know, our climate is changing. We're all aware of that. And fires, especially since, you know, we had the 2008 fire. There were fires prior to that, 2006, 2000. But the 2008 fire there in portions of the, the Trinity River Canyon and then. You know, I can't go through all of them, but fire intensity, severity, size are have definitely been increasing. Over the last 15 to 20 years and the impact of those on current activity centers as well as habitat. Is, you know, it's not something we can just wave off. It definitely is an impact. I don't really know what more I could say, you know, I don't have specific statistics about. The acres of suitable habitat that burned at least in 2020. On the two forests or even in California, you know, California spotted owl is also being affected by this as well. Does that answer your question? I mean, I.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good information and I, I'm. You know, always trying to. You know, keep up with what. The real threats to the owl are. You know, we're working in the. Timber harvesting business. I mean, we, we could go to great lengths to. Protect the owl and I just. You know, sometimes feel frustrated that, you know, as you mentioned, the big threats really today are. The, the presence of the barred owl and, and these large mega fires. And. Probably not what's being done, you know, from. Timber harvesting on private timberlands. I don't know if you agree with that or not.
I don't make a position on it. Either way, I, I do really feel like active management as it's described in the critical habitat rule. As well as the, the 2012 rule. That we're currently operating and the 2011 recovery plan for the owl. You know, really highlight some key things that should be looked at when you're planning projects, you know, I'm primarily work, you know, with our federal action agencies, but definitely. Have somewhat understanding of what occurs on, you know, Sierra Pacific Industries and, you know. Prior Roseburg administered lands and Mishkal Timber Products. And others. And I, yeah, that we, we can't get ahead of some of these fires fast enough and, you know, treating those. Especially plantations, but other early and even mid-seral. Stands to make those stands more resilient to fire effects. And reducing fuel loading. And then obviously, you know, human safety is always, you know, something that we consider as well. So focusing on key ingress egress areas, key ridge areas. We have been working with the two forests on trying to develop a fuels programmatic. That, you know, that they, that can expedite, you know, at least the ESA side. For some of those treatments. But again, I can't speak enough to trying to get out ahead of it. Further, you know, to do some more proactive forest restoration with keeping in mind, you know, known owl sites, higher value habitat. With the barred owl, you know, there is a demographic issue there in terms of those competitive interactions. And, you know, trying to, you know, we're. Barred owl management, you know, strategy is being developed and there has been the experimental removals that have been occurring. For the past several years and information, you know, is coming out, you know, about that and how effective that can be. But there's a lot of different. Pressures, you know, that are all acting in synergy on the species. So. Thanks, John.
Christine, could I ask? Is the. Is the proposal that's extended to April 30th, the three million acre one or the smaller one?
The, the, the rule, the effective date that is extended to April 30th is the larger rule, the one that published on January 15th. So that's the, the basically 3.5 million exclusion.
I'll just add.
Can you tell us how that? Can you tell us how that rule affects Trinity County generally speaking? Is it all of our stuff? Is it a little of our stuff? Some of our stuff?
I can try, Arnold. The, I haven't gone through. The, the new files that were shared for each. Critical subunit. There's about 624,000, 625,000 estimate acres in California. That were proposed for designation with that January rule. In Trinity County, let me just do some quick. Math. All right. Just a second. I would say that it's about. This is a really rough estimate, so please don't, you can put it in the notes, but say it's the estimate. Based on where the subunits fall. It's about 280,000 acres and it's all on. The Forest Services designated matrix lands under the Northwest Forest Plan. So areas that were designated as late successional reserve were not proposed for exclusion or not posed, but not. With that rule.
Just one more. So it's probably all acres, all acres that are in matrix probably were proposed.
And they weren't proposed.
Proposed rule just addressed lands up in the ONC lands and some tribal lands in Oregon. That, that August 2020 proposed rule that came out was specific to 205,000 acres up in Oregon.
The final rule, right. It was the final rule that came out and hasn't become effective yet. That added all the millions of acres of matrix lands, some of which are in Trinity County.
Right, for exclusion.
I'll just step back for one second.
Thank you.
Jeremy Brown had added to the chat that he said that he just spoke with Christie with Sierra Pacific and that they are in support of the bill. For those that aren't following the chat there. And go ahead, Larry.
I had a question for Christine and Gina. Originally the spotted owl was being managed as an indicator species. Is that no longer the case or is it still representing up to 80? Old growth dependent species?
I guess I'm not sure how to answer that question. From the Fish and Wildlife Services perspective, we, you know, manage the owl as a, as a threatened species. I think some of the indicator species come in a bit more with other agencies and other designations. So I don't think we can speak towards that indicator species.
Can I ask a question? We manage the owl as just the owl, not, not representing other species.
Northern spotted owl. Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, I don't know if this is for Christine or Gina, but um, could, uh, we get a, a report or information on. What management is being done for quote unquote the barred owl? I would like to get that, please. I'm very concerned on this particular management, which is basically the killing of a. Species that back basically interbreeds with the spotted owl. So I think it's a real issue. Of contention and I'd like to get that onto the agenda actually for. The collaborative place.
I wonder if some of the entities that are doing some of that work might be better at presenting that. Green Diamond and SPI maybe specifically. They might be better at reporting what they're doing and we can provide support for, for that.
Kelly, could we get that?
I'm noting it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Real follow up.
Kelly, I did want to make a correction to my estimate about Trinity County lands. I was looking at. You know, areas for the, all of the ICC subunit. So it wasn't about 280,000. It's about 179 acres. For Trinity County alone. But again, those are all on matrix lands. Managed by the Forest Service.
Very good. Thanks, Christine. While, if there are no other questions for this topic. Is there any report out from Christine or Gina on the programmatic that you all were working with the Shasta Trinity on?
Fuels programmatic. I think Christine touched on that. I think that's what you're asking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Christine, you want to talk about that again?
Sorry, I must. I, I can certainly speak to it and would offer Ted MacArthur to add any additional information. We had been working. With a very solid core team of fuels specialists from, so Kevin Osborne from the Shasta Trinity and Clint Isbell from the Klamath. As well as our biological team here at the service and the Forest Service had a designated biologist. Working on that with us too and developing prescription. A prescription, one basically, you know, for ridge, key ridge tops. And areas within the wildland urban interface. And then the Forest Service had asked us, you know, what would a prescription look like? You know, that would basically just degrade NSO habitat, not downgrade or remove it, but degrade it where you could implement that prescription. Basically in a naive, you know, landscape. Unsurveyed, but with seasonal restrictions. Around implementation times. And so we came up with a prescription and that's called prescription two. So our fuels programmatic currently includes. The options to use both of those. And then we're also integrating in the prescriptions that were developed. For the pilot roads and plantations project into that fuels programmatic. We've sort of installed out on. Getting to a, you know, an agreed to biological assessment and getting everything buttoned up. But we've come a long way in terms of, you know, talking about those prescriptions, looking at. Areas where the forests would like to go, you know, with these treatments. And the work, you know, with our, our fuels team has been especially. Good, you know, and kind of sharing information back and forth and getting a better understanding about the species biology. And owl's use of the landscape as well as fuels treatments. And their effectiveness and where and why. And again, I want to point out that the, the prescriptions that have been developed. You know, they're, they're developed with the intent of being able to get those stand conditions into a place where suppression. Crews can safely be there to suppress. They're not intended to stop a fire. There, we're not going to be able, you know, to stop many fires depending, you know, on the weather conditions and the wind speeds and relative humidity and all of that. So we've come a long way and we're waiting now. Hopefully getting really, really close to having somebody from the Forest Service being able to. Work with us again on this and pick it up. And we've estimated. That with the remaining work that needs to be done with getting the, the programmatic BA written, agreed to. And then our biological opinion, you know, back to. agreed to. And then our biological opinion, you know, back to that is about six months. So we're hoping to be completed uh by the end of August. Although that might get pushed a little bit further, we're going to do, you know, the best that we can once we have that the the person that is going to be working with us from the Forest Service. And Ted or Gina, please add anything if I missed a key topic.
And I think you said it's the Shasta Trinity and it's the Clameth National Forest.
Yeah, correct. So it's about four. Well, yeah. It's a big area.
And and just to tag on, you know, Christine really covered it well. We are looking forward to ha- having this in place and and we do have a biologist lined up to to get this work done and we're just kind of uh we're actually contracting it out so we can have somebody dedicated to to writing the agreed upon biological assessment. So that'll be really good and that that agree that contract is um not in place should should be shortly. And then, you know, the other thing, just to just to share, um, th- this is a a a something that we've been working on uh for quite a while on on both climate and Shasta Trinity side. Um, a- and it is something that I I think is a a good example and template and and we'll we'll probably be working to expand it in the um the uh Six Rivers as well. Um, a- after this one gets put in place, the Six Rivers has one in place. It's more like more like option two, um, but in interested in having uh broader options and and having more kind of parity across borders on both forests.
Great. Are there any any questions from the collaborative on the on this project? Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Ted. Thank you, Christine. Uh, thank you, Gina, uh for for the sort of elaborating on that, uh the progress on that. Uh, greatly appreciated. I guess at this point we will move on to the of some of the Forest Service updates, particularly Taren Chris, uh anything that you want to report out with regard to the August fire post fire re- restoration and and uh activities?
Sure, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and go first. Um, I'm, as you know, I'm working on August Phase One. So let me just start off by saying good morning and let you know how thrilled I am to see that the uh the rack is the Trinity County rack is going to be up and running and and getting some really much needed work done on the ground in Trinity County. Um, it's a great avenue for us to work with uh work with the community and work with our partners to get to get some really great work done. I'm 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 really, really looking forward to that. Um, also, uh, of note is the, uh, we got WCF Phase One has been signed and I'm cleared by the Water Board. So some of that work, trail work has already begun. So that's exciting um for us there in Leaverville. Okay, so going back to August, um, you had asked me, we'll start with August. So August Phase One, um, our scoping is out. It closes um on the 26th. And uh we have, um, we have had a few setbacks with the snow. Um, as you know, it's uh the the roads aren't wonderful at places on the on the west side and uh we we've been struggling a little bit with the roads getting snowed out. Um, and obviously you can't can't get your important survey work done as far as archaeology and botany goes when there's snow on the ground. So um while we've been kind of waiting for some of that stuff to to thaw out and and give us a better access, we've been working to get some agreements put in place with uh the Watershed Center um and and others to try to get some of our 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 critical forestry and survey needs met. Um, so those those uh making good progress there with getting those agreements put in place. Also, uh, have had two public meetings um that were virtual, um, received some um some good good comments, good interaction in the Q and A portion of the of the uh virtual meetings. So um sort of a a different platform. It's uh certainly not as it's not not as good as it would be in person where you can actually, uh, you know, take your time and and see people face to face. But uh it was definitely, um, they were very beneficial to us to hear what the public had to say and what they're what they're looking for, what their concerns are. Um, let's see, uh, obviously, big picture on August Phase One is that uh we're focusing on those high severity areas because those will be the areas that that need the most restoration as well as focusing on the um the recreation pieces. So that's the the three campgrounds, um Scott Flot, Hell's Gate and Doggone It. Scott Flot, Hell's Gate and oh, a forest plan.
Forest plan.
Took me a minute. I got there though. Uh, so we're we're working on that. Um, as as many of you know, many of the hazard trees that were hazard to 36 have been removed. But that didn't necessarily address all the hazard trees in the campground itself. Um, we're excited about getting those campgrounds back online as quickly as we can, including using some uh our nursery up on the Mount Shasta side to get some uh native vegetation, brush grasses, um, as well as getting some saplings and doing some things a little bit different to to get that camp, those campgrounds back on board uh and up and running. Wanted to let you guys all know that uh we have started meeting with the regulatory agencies, um inviting them to our uh to our meetings. Um, we had to unfortunately cancel our field trip with uh with Fish and Wildlife Service. Each time that we've tried to schedule a field trip, we may single handedly be solving the drought problem because each time there's been a snow event that's come right on the date that we are supposed to go to the woods. So I had to push those back, but we'll follow through on that. Um, would like to get, as we work through the COVID issues, would like to get some field trips planned with this group out to August Phase One to to take a look at it and see what your input and and uh ideas and concerns are and and let you know kind of firsthand in real life what what we're looking at as well. Um, and I think lastly, I would uh just let you know that out in the August fire footprint, we are still working on uh some fire suppression repair as well as bear work. They also are waiting for uh ground conditions to be uh suitable for that work to to begin again. So um, that's the update from August Phase One. And at this point, unless there's questions related to August Phase One, I'll pass it to Chris to uh to bring you up to speed on August Phase Two.
Well, I have a Tara, I have a comment. Um, I look at uh weather underground, there's 10 day forecast to kind of schedule my time in the field and they are are very accurate. So you might, you might want to uh consider that for future field trip.
Yeah, that sounds, uh, we'll give that a shot. I know that we've tried to um trying to work across the agencies. We we tend to schedule our meetings a couple of weeks out in advance. But uh uh that sounds like a great option and um certainly will save me from getting uh getting on the field on the wrong day. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
I'm not sure if people can see me. I can't see myself, but I guess uh I guess people can hear me.
I can see you and hear you, Chris.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So thanks, Tara. Um, I wanted to talk about the Phase Two of the Fire Recovery Project. And um what we're looking to do in in Phase Two, you know, been talking with um, I've been talking with our staff for a long time about what the what what we really need to do on landscape. And um so, you know, we've got some kind of ba- ba- basic overarching themes, you know, one is the continuing restoration. In addition to what's being done in Phase One, um, talking about things like reforestation and the site preparation that needs to occur before we can do uh before we can do reforestation, treat doing some watershed restoration, treating legacy sediment sites. Um, and at the same time, looking at long term uh fire resiliency, uh looking at how do we treat this land so that um when there's a fire in the area in the future, um, we have better chance at containing it. Uh, and the and the stands themselves and the forests themselves has has a better chance of uh of being resilient to that uh to that to those future fires. So what you know, what we've noticed is that on our forest, really across the nation, but on our forest is that when areas burn really hot, uh 10, 20 years later, they burn really hot again. And so one of the best ways that we can uh deal with this is of course removing fuels, but also prescribed fire. And so in order to get the best result uh on these prescribed fire activities and and fuel reduction activities, we want to look at a contiguous uh landscape so that we're treating, we're treating all the fuels, not all the fuels, but we're treating, we're treating all of the acres within a a particular area. That really helps us when we've got, you know, firebrands uh traveling a half mile in advance to the fire. Uh, something that that purely treating a very narrow area might not accomplish. So we looked at a place that we could uh we could treat, you know, we could do some more reforestation, a place that we could do um prescribed fire and fuel breaks across a a contiguous area. We wanted to find an area that we could treat that was a reasonable size. We didn't want to get involved in a project that was going to treat, you know, tens of thousands of acres uh and potentially um, you know, hamstring the rest of our our program on the west side because there's a lot of important things that need to get on on the west side. So we wanted to look for, you know, a reason a reasonable size uh that was contiguous that we could that we could take advantage of roads, that we could take advantage of of plantations that had burned and treat that. And then we wanted to find a strategic location, a place that uh would provide value across the landscape. So if I if I could share my screen and um, oh, um, it looks like I'm disabled from that. Would I be able to share my screen, Kelly?
I'm setting that up. Uh, go ahead.
Okay. I don't know which screen it's going to share, so. All right. If I could get a little feedback that you guys can see the map, that'd be great.
You can see a map.
Wonderful. Okay, so what what we're, thank you. So what we're looking at is uh the light pink area. This area is uh not far from Highway 36. It's an area that includes the edge of the fire. I don't know if you can see my mouse.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So this northeastern northern and northeastern boundary of the the this uh Phase Two area is actually where we were able to stop the fire, uh, stop the August fire. So we've got some history here. This is a great ridge that we've been able to use to stop the fire. But right now with the, it's also an area with a lot of intense uh fire behavior in the past, a lot of black, a lot of dead, uh, a lot of really intense uh mortality here. And so, you know, if we're not able to go back and do some work in this area, it will probably be harder for us to use this ridge in the future. So sorry, my my dog found her way in, so excuse that. Anyway, um, this area is important. It's got a a good ridge here. It's got a lot of really good roads. These are level three roads. The uh the brown is level three roads. We can put some fuel break work on these roads. This is the 29 road down here, the Bramlett Road. Uh, and this is the edge of the inventory of an inventoried roadless area. And being able to control fire on the edge of a inventoried roadless area is really important because the um, you know, we have limited ability to do that within the limited, within the inventoried roadless area. So having having the ability to to prevent fire spread into the roadless area or out of the roadless area is really valuable. This also isn't, this also is strategically located to provide protection to the Wildwood area and the and the Trinity Pines area. And then finally, um, this is within, you'll see these, you'll see these um dark names here, Dubicella, Hayfort Creek, Smokey Creek and Rattlesnake Creek. These are designated landscape scale areas that were designated in the 2014 fire farm bill. And what this means is that by treating within these, and actually, this this proposed area actually treats within three areas. But by treating within these areas, we can uh treat up to 3,000 acres under a CE. Uh, we would actually be not using the insect and disease category that was created in 2014, but we'd be using the fire resiliency category uh that was established in 2018, but also has to be utilized within these watersheds. So um, you know, we're really taking advantage of a lot of things. Um, this is not a very large project, but it's a strategic project. It allows us to treat plantations. It allows us to treat along roads. It allows us to burn and it allows us to do all of this in a relatively, you know, in a in a good sized area that allows us to use a CE on a strategic area of the landscape. So I would really like to get your input. I'd love to take you out in the field, maybe next, maybe in the next couple of months. And um, you know, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are, but but our hope is that by by keeping it small and keeping it targeted, we can have something finished by the end of the year. I'll also mention that we've got a little bit of staffing changes. I've invited Dan Ostman and Randy Paris on the call. Uh, Dan Ostman is our our fuels specialist and he's he's actually leaving the Forest Service, going to the uh go to the Park Service and he's he's been uh really instrumental in helping us design this. Randy Paris is our silviculturist. She's taking a detail. Uh, and and while we hope us, while we hope she's back, we also hope her to do very well in the in in the new location if that's what she she wants and and if and if it's she's good there. So um inviting them, they can answer, they can help and help me answer questions. Um, but um you know, I think that this type of project is something that we can, we can, we can handle in a reasonable amount of time and get some really good work done on the ground. With that, um, if there's any questions, I don't know if we want to open up to questions now or move on to the next type of project.
I think we should probably go ahead and then change with Kristen Lark. And and then if we had, it would be nice to hear probably from Aaron Taylor of the NRCS about uh about their August complex um efforts.
Of course.
Great. Well, you know, before you come to me, I, you know, Kathy Mick is on the line today. And as you know, she's um act detailed in as the forest supervisor behind Ted while Ted's over there. So I wanted to give her a chance first to welcome herself and say, uh, give a little bit. And then she can point on me to give some of the the details if you guys are okay with that. Thanks. All right. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Kristen. Um, you could have gone ahead. It it would have been fine, but uh good morning, everyone, and and thank you. Um, as Kristen mentioned, yes, I am Kathy Mick and I'm acting for soup on the Six Rivers right now, uh, while Ted's over um next door on the Shasta Trinity. And I'll be here till uh around or about May 8th. Have certainly been enjoying my time and meeting folks as we as we go along. And so the the things that we have going that Kristen will talk about, of course, is the um, you know, we have a a CE that we're working on for the August complex. And then we have a larger restoration EA that we are also um, you know, working on. And um, we're also working uh to hopefully set up some, you know, field field trips, right, Kristen, in the in the very near near future. Of course, as Tara mentioned, the weather's been a little bit um uncooperative with us in terms of being able to to get out and look at stuff. Um, our CE, we we had to push our timeline a little bit. We had hoped that we would be uh signing a decision memo around the first week of April and and we've pushed that back to about the the middle of April now. And so I will go ahead and let um Kristen, you know, talk about the 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 devil in the details as she's the one that's tracking most of the stuff with the the ID ID team. But um, you know, I'm available to to talk with folks and answer any questions. So so thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kathy. I'm glad you had a chance to do that little introduction. So um, so as Kathy mentioned, our first project um out the door is the Three Forks Salvage CE. That we're looking for a decision date of April 16th. The staff work is is going along as planned and we're meeting all those other deadlines. So hopefully you guys got the scoping letter. Um, that's the scoping period is open until March 29th and the scoping letter was sent out last week. So let me know if there's anybody here that didn't get that information and I'll make sure you get it. So with that in mind, um, I've scheduled a field trip for this project on next Friday, the 26th. So I'll send out an email and that is for our partners, you know, all you, the Fuel Working Group, I've reached out to Trinity River Lumber, um, and some of the our other partners. So we're planning that for Friday and I I've been looking at the weather. I'll check out Weather Underground and I think that we'll be good with that. But as Kathy mentioned, we've had, as we all know, a lot of snow and that has slowed down a little bit of the field work. But there's plenty of other work going on. So that's going on. And then our next large project is the Mad River August Complex Restoration EA. And this is one where we're working with our partner NCRC. We have Dave Fuller as the project leader on that. And we are having our kickoff meeting for that next week. So we're getting that staffed up primarily with NCRC folks and that's under the existing. So we're getting that staffed up primarily with NCRC folks and that's under the existing agreement, Tara mentioned agreements. I'm working on modifying that and we're doing some agreement stuff. So that will be, you know, we're getting to the end of our CE and then we'll move into the larger restoration project. We're a little bit different than Shasta Trinity with their Phase One, Phase Two. We're kind of combining it all in one, in one project. You know, we had different things that we needed to deal with. And so in that project, I'm hopeful that that will be the one that will really get your attention and partner with us because we will have a salvage component. We will have fuels reduction, oak woodland restoration, reforestation, treating legacy sediment sites and, and a whole bunch of other stuff that is a good restoration package. That footprint, we have a draft footprint, but for the most part, it, we're going back into previously analyzed timber sale units from some of our old decisions that still have some valid survey data and roadside, additional roadside for hazard trees. If I didn't mention that one, that'll, hazard trees are a component of everything that we're going to be doing. So that, that, those are the two big projects. There's also, you know, other little things going on as well. You know, looking at some of the other act, open timber sale contracts that we have to make sure that we're doing the right thing there. Also suppression repair is still going on and the bear work is still going on as well. Sally Cousins from the Shasta Trinity is helping the Six Rivers lead up that effort on the non-motorized trails with the CCCs and the SCA to help us with that. And it's been all hands on deck. Lots of help from the other units on the forest and from the SO. And that's probably about it. We, we didn't have the impacts to the recreation sites like Shasta Trinity did. We were very fortunate that our, our campgrounds around the lake pretty much were out of the fire. Well, they were inside the footprint, but they escaped any damage for the most part. So we don't really have a lot there. We're really focusing on the roads and working with private land and with the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District and the Ruth Lake, you know, to kind of clean up those areas. Additionally, Cal OES, we issued a road permit for them to haul the remediation spoils from the work that they're going to be doing. So there's a lot of little things that are also going on other than just our, our two big restoration. Well, the salvage and then the restoration project. So I'll stop there and if there's any questions, feel free.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're muted, Kelly.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Kristen. Pat, do you want to go ahead and take over? I'm kind of doing some other stuff in the background here.
Yes. So maybe at this point, we could hear from Aaron with NRCS on what they've been doing over in the August complex.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Good morning. I'm Erin Taylor, District Conservationist for the Weaverville NRCS Service Center. And so we're, our, our team's primarily just trucking along. We're working with private landowners as they seek interest either by emailing us or calling us. And we've been scheduling onsite field visits with them one-on-one to see what the resource concerns are on their private property. And then we're just planning the appropriate conservation treatments in, in that fashion. And so we actually just had our EQUIP, that's the Environmental Quality Incentives Program ranking deadline yesterday, actually. And so we actually have another EQUIP ranking deadline coming up on June, June, let me pull up my calendar here, June 9th, which is a Wednesday. And so there, there's still another funding cycle and an opportunity for private landowners to, to request financial assistance to implement the conservation practices that have been identified and needed for their resource concern. And so we have a, a specific fund pool available called Catastrophic Fire Recovery. And so that allows the, the applicants to just complete, compete against other fire affected clients throughout the state of California. We also have other funding sources available through EQUIP for our standard fuels reduction, forest health related projects. So we are always planning for the preventive side as well as working with our fire affected communities. So that is pretty much all I have as far as a brief update. And so we're, if you know of anybody that can utilize our, our technical and our financial assistance, please feel free to provide them with my contact information.
Great. Thank you, Erin. So before we take questions on the August complex, Ted wanted a few minutes to kind of go back and kind of take a high five with you. To Ted.
Thanks, Pat. And I, I just wanted to give a real kind of brief overview of a, a couple of things that, that we didn't mention. As was shared, we're really focused on getting several projects done as quickly as possible. And whether it be the Six Rivers or the Shasta Trinity have mobilized all, all the resources that we have to kind of come to bear and, and do as much as we can in, in a pretty short window. One thing that you didn't hear about is the South Fork Mountain. That, that's not off the table, but it's, it's not the, based off of kind of the, the risks and the fire severity. That's not our, our, our first effort, but it is an effort we're working on to follow up on a joint project between the two forests to really use that Fire Shield, the Fuel Break White Paper as a, as a kind of an inspiration and, and guiding document as we work towards that. So, so that is something we're putting the groundwork on. And then the other, the other thing I wanted to share and, and though my, my time on the Shasta Trinity is, is short, there's some things that I'm passionate about that we're trying to kind of get some, some good progress on, on, on the Six Rivers. There's a, a, a effort to get a forest-wide kind of fuels programmatic, really looking at not only fuel breaks, but also being able to do under burning and organize those where it makes sense. We're also kind of planting the seed on the Shasta Trinity to have a similar type of approach. So that, again, it opens up more of the area for doing that prescribed burning and getting ahead of, of things and, and maintaining the burn cycle in, in some of these areas that are burned through. So just, just to give us more tools. And as you've heard, there, there are many more grant opportunities coming up. And if we're able to position ourselves and, and get some of these broader programmatic type of, of looks between under burning and fuel break treatments, it'll position ourselves well for being able to compete and, and, and get, get some good work done on the ground. So just a couple of things I wanted to highlight that are on the table as well, but didn't, didn't quite get covered. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Ted. So at this point, I'll kind of open it up for questions, comments on the various presentations and projects related to the August complex and see where that takes us.
Pat, Joseph here. You know, after the input that we made from the last meeting, I think it's time for the collaborative to take another look at their recommendations to the Forest Service. I kind of have a feeling like we're moving away from the stewardship vision that we had early on. It's more toward getting the logs out and we'll get the other work done at some, some point in the future. I think it would be worth at the next meeting that we have a discussion around our recommendations. Are they up to date? Are they meeting the, the needs of the Forest Service? You know, I just think it's, it's time for us to reevaluate what we're putting forth to the Forest Service. So the last meeting kind of triggered my, my mind about that. And I went back and looked at some of the things we've proposed in the past. And I think it's time for a reevaluation. Probably not just the Fuel Break Work Group, but the collaborative itself. So anyway, if, if we could get that on the agenda for the next meeting, that would please me.
Okay. Thank you, Joseph. Others? Terry, if you're trying to talk.
I just wanted to ask Kristen, for details on the field trip, if you can just remember about the one-way traffic on the hour or whatever it is for scheduling for folks coming over from Weaverville or the, this side of that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. So add in an extra hour, probably. Okay, copy that.
Good, good comment, Jerry. I thought Terry had something, but he just went out the door. So others?
Yeah, I have a question.
Somebody had a phone call.
Okay, so Kenneth, Kenneth, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question for Kristen. My outfit marked the Beaver Slide Timber Sale and it was all selected cut. And someone I was talking to this week said that some of those units, I don't know if it was in that Three Forks sale, were planned to be clear cut. Is that correct?
No, we do not have a clear cut prescription. We have, first of all, did you receive the scoping letter?
I don't believe I did.
Okay. I'll make sure I get your contact information and I'll get that to you and you'll see where the units are, what we decided to do.
Kristen, what you could do is send Kelly and me the scoping letter and we can put it out to the entire active group.
That would be so easy. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll do that. So we're re-entering units that were part, under contract in Beaver Slide that are tractor units with high severity fire. So we have, for the most part, mortality in there. Not, not all the trees died, but there's some units where there's quite a bit of mortality in there. So yeah, we're doing that under the 250 acre CE. So it's a very small footprint. We're looking at about 180 acres that is unit-based, that would fall under that category where we're going to go in. The rest of it is roadside. It's a pretty small footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other thoughts, comments, questions on the August complex?
Oh. Nothing about the August complex.
Okay. Okay. So we're kind of, our agenda's a little bit jumbled from scheduling. So we thought maybe at this point, if there's nothing else on the August complex, that we would go to Amelia Flites from the RCD and the BLM staff on the Little Browns Creek Fuel Reduction Project. So there's, I see Amelia, so.
And there was a, there was a comment about how this came, you know, onto this agenda and the, I guess the, this presentation was given both to the Weaverville Community Forest Steering Committee as well as the Trinity County Fire Safe Council. And it was recommended, I think, I believe, I believe it was Jerry Cousins that asked the, to have this come up with the, with the full collaborative.
Okay. So Amelia, Ozzy, you're both, there you go. You're unmuted now, Amelia.
Thanks. I'm going to let Ozzy share the slides and then we'll get rolling. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amelia Flites and I am the Watershed Program Manager at the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. Thank you very much for having us here today. So we are here today to talk about our Little Browns Creek Fuel Reduction Project. And I'm here with Ozzy Welsh, who is the Trinity County Resource Conservation District Forest Health Program Manager. And so the goal of this project is to prevent high severity fire in the Weaver Creek Basin by treating units in the Little Browns Creek area. Next. And so this project is one prong of a larger project that's looking to enhance the stream flow in the Weaver Creek Basin. And this is funded through Prop 1 and the Wildlife Conservation Board. Next. So this project is based in the Weaverville Community Forest. Currently, the project is in draft EA, so we're hoping to get it out for scoping later this month or early in April. So in relation to Weaverville, we're looking at this BLM section right at the bottom of Little Browns Creek Road near where it connects with 299. Next. And so here we can see some of the topography of the section. So it's a fairly steep section. In 2018, the Trinity County RCD had funding to do an analysis of the stands in this area. Next. And so from that, what came out, the biggest result was that it's overstocked. There's, there's the access road in there for the Little Browns Creek community. So they wanted to see roadside reduction, which has already been done by BLM, so awesome on that. But also look to treat some of the landscapes throughout that parcel. And it also has an oak woodland component. And so there's a heterogeneous mix of oak and conifer in this area. So looking at a bit of a oak woodland release as well as promoting a healthy, diverse forest. So here we can see some of that. And here we have some more of the pictures that are showing us what that landscape looks like, at the current status. Next. And so just different points. And so originally, what came out of this was to look at doing a, a potential harvest to get retained receipts to fund future fuel, fuel reductions. Upon doing further analysis and evaluations, it was determined that a productive timber sale was not going to be feasible and that it would end up being a deficit sale. And so we have moved away from looking to do a harvest in this area. And so we're now looking to do just landscape fuel reduction. On to the next. And I'm going to hand it over to Ozzy.
Yeah. So once we knew that it was going to be a fuel reduction based project, I took a look at some fire modeling software to try to determine where we could get the most bang for our buck in terms of doing these fuel treatments and actually affecting wildfire behavior in the inevitable event of an eventual wildfire on this section. So I basically used a bunch of different, yeah, weather data and canopy cover and other publicly available data to run some models and figure out where, where within this section we had the greatest risk of extreme fire behavior. So long flame lengths and fire getting into the canopy. And so after running that, these, this map shows like some very, let's say like impractical units that are just sharp polygons of where the model spit out that it was predicting the most extreme fire behavior within this section in the event of a fire under sort of a summer, summertime weather conditions that are common for the area. And so the one unit that's shown here in pink is shown in that color because the funding, which the funding for this project is focused on Little Browns Creek and water that flows into Little Browns Creek and making sure that we're protecting that, that waterway. So the, the unit shown in pink was shown to be likely to have extreme fire behavior in the event of a wildfire. But it, it didn't really suit us for this project because it doesn't flow into Little Browns Creek. It's actually kind of a southeast facing aspect there. So it's flowing the other way, all the water from that slope. So the yellow units were kind of what we honed in on as areas that both served the purpose of the project and would hopefully be really efficient use of funding for trying to moderate fire behavior in this section.
And so here we have the. And so here we have the units, so which have been identified. So for those of you who are calling in, there have been five different units um, in section 20 of BLM land in Little Browns Creek area. Uh, so there's three units up in the northwest corner there, which are closer to 299. Uh, a fourth unit is further up a, up the road, uh, as it nears SPI and up to the community, uh, the private land parcels. And then there's a fifth unit, which is on the um, mid to southeast side of the unit. And so that's a, a large treatment that comes in between Browns Mountain Road and then up into uh, one of the Spur Roads, which uh, is known as Spur Road E. Um, off of some of the ridgeline treatment that ha, the ridgeline road that uh, moves from SPI into BLM.
Yeah, and so hopefully you can see by looking at this map, um, compared to the previous that we, we tried to focus on the areas, but make them more manageable units on the ground that followed geographic features or roads that would actually be more implementable. So that's how we got from model output to uh, the, the actual units there.
Uh, and the little, if you can go back for a second, that little green section that's outside the section unit that is on BLM, there's a little tail that comes off there. Um, so we're not encroaching on SPI or anything like that.
Um, so into the proposed prescription of what we're planning to do in those units, um, we worked with uh, Rob at BLM to come up with this prescription, um, similar to prescriptions that he's implemented in other places um, in Trinity County. So total, all those units come together to about 222 acres. Um, it's going to be a shaded fuel break. And so we have i- in the draft EA that we're working on, um, environmental assessment that we're working on, we have initial treatment methods and then maintenance methods lined out. So for the initial treatment methods, I'll just go through. I know it's a big block of text. I'll just go through it with you. Um, so basically we're, we're focusing on removing those small diameter trees, uh, snags and shrubs that are overstocked and overly dense, as you saw in some of the photos um, that Amelia walked, walked us through earlier. Um, they'll also be pruning as part of the treatment to try to reduce the ladder fuels, um, reduce the connectivity, vertical connectivity of the fuels in the area. Um, some larger trees and larger snags uh, might be removed if they are piercing the canopy of an oak um, in order to release the oak, or if they're immediately threatening roads or crew safety as they're out there operating. But um, but typically we will be focusing on those smaller diameter trees. That's the, that's the goal. Most of the, most of the material will be dealt with um, through piling, so manual cutting with chainsaws and then piling to be burned um, later, but there will be some smaller areas of chipping, uh, mostly along roads where we can actually get a chipper in there. And um, it doesn't say it here, but potentially some lop and scatter as needed if there's um, less dense areas of fuels. Um, we are looking to retain live canopy cover of 40% or greater. We've had some questions about this and um, uh, the, the reason for that sort of really broad language is because there is so much heterogeneity in the section that Amelia mentioned. We, we have some areas that are super open oak woodland and areas that are denser conifer forests. So we want to be able to tailor the treatment to uh, those different cover types. We're going to preferentially retain oak trees. Um, and we won't be cutting any riparian vegetation, um, or building new roads or working in streams or anything like that. Um, for maintenance, we uh, we want to start maintenance treatments within one to five years of the initial treatment. And um, for maintenance, well, we can, we might do the same thing as the initial treatment, which again is manual cutting, piling, pile burning and chipping. Or um, we might also use broadcast burns um, as a cost-effective and ecologically appropriate way to maintain our initial treatment.
Wrap up Amelia if you want. Yeah, thank you guys for having us here today, um, and to the BLM for all of their support in developing this project. Um, and as it moves forward, we'll be sure to keep you guys informed. Uh, at this point in time, if you have any questions or comments, we're happy to address them.
Sure. This is Joseph. I have a couple concerns there. Uh, this Little Browns Creek neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods in the county that's at severe risk of getting caught in a fire and not being able to get out. So I would really uh, urge you to concentrate more of your work along Little Browns Creek Road to make it safe for that neighborhood to evacuate if they need to in event of a fire. Uh, there's been a little work done in there already. It's looking good, but it needs a lot more to make a safe uh, place for people to evacuate. And the other uh, comment I have is uh, the live canopy that you're proposing to reduce to 40% is a mistake. Your fuel break will have a limited lifespan if you let in enough sun to create thickets of pine trees and brush in that area. I would recommend that you go back to the collaborative fuel break work group uh, recommendation of maintaining as much shade as you can on the site after cleaning up the ground and ladder fuels. Keep shade on the site so it makes the fuel break effective for more years. So that's my, my observations on it.
Thank you, Joseph. I thought Bob Morris's little box was lighting up. Bob, did you have something to add here?
I believe my box lights up every time the telephone moves. Um, I've been watching this project since its inception and have quite a bit of input and precisely the two comments Joseph just made were two of my comments. And all work that's been in the watershed is appreciated, but focusing on the road and the ridge between town and us, I believe, is absolutely the priority for our neighborhood back here. Um, and then uh, had a conversation with Rob Winkler about the 40% uh, canopy retention and it said exactly what Joseph said. And I think if Rob's still on the line, I could ask him to address that because he's done so much good work out here and he seems to understand the issue and had a way of addressing it that that satisfied me for the short term to see his results. So um.
Rob, are you on still?
Yes, I am. Thank, I appreciate that, Bob, and appreciate the comments uh, on, on the project in general. So uh, yep, this uh, this project specification has come up multiple times. Um, it's intentionally broad. And so um, when I spoke with, spoke with Mr. Morris about it, um, so it's a reduction of the canopy to a maximum of 40%. Um, and so this is a specification we've used on other projects within Trinity County um, with some success. Now, I will say, and Ozzy did touch on it, this is, this treatment is not uh, a homogeneous stand. It's not the same across all acres. There are um, to get down into the unit, so unit four and unit three and unit two, the south-facing units, uh, they do have a large component of uh, oak overstory and we really want to maintain that and enhance that because these are fire resilient stands. Now, our north-facing unit, the larger unit, uh, Brown's Unit Five, uh, it's a north-facing unit. It's a dominant uh, dug fur stand, large diameter, um, large diameter trees, um, pretty homogeneous across that unit. Um, and so we intentionally wrote the 40% reduction broad. So within that statement, it's saying there are also areas, and I'm going to call out unit five, where post-treatment, we may retain 80% plus canopy because these are large, large diameter stands. Our treatment is not touching uh, you know, diameters and uh, the first stand, we're not reducing that overall large canopy. So success may be a retained 80% canopy. But now on the south-facing slopes, we also need to reduce some of the woody shrubs. We need to reduce um, some of the conifer, a lot of the conifer in these uh, oak woodlands, and we may want to reduce that up to 50% and greater. And so um, it's intentionally broad. Um, please don't read that we're going to reduce uh, the canopy across the entire project up to 40%. That's uh, or 40% remaining. That's, that's not the goal. Uh, it is, it is variable across the project area.
Okay. Other people, other thoughts, comments, questions?
Yeah, uh, this is Kenneth. I, I worked on this project. I've walked all these roads and walked through a lot of these stands. And uh, I just wanted to point out on this um, potential skid road in the northwest corner that leads into an SPI uh, unit, which has been uh, really reduced in, in stocking. I mean, it's almost a clear cut in there. So it's, and that's on a ridge top. So that would just be an extension of what is already a ridge top uh, fuel break. Uh, I, I have a question about um, unit five. I'm wondering why is this uh, unit doesn't go along that um, south ridge top skid trail that's shown there? Cause that is, it would be easy to, to go along there and uh, work both sides of the ridge, which is pretty steep on both sides. It's a narrow ridge, but it's got an existing skid trail that goes on out beyond the south boundary of BLM. And that seems to me like that would be a logical place to continue that, that fuel break uh, as a point of uh, being able to back burn to the, to the west.
So um, Ozzy, are you able to kind of put a cursor on that so people can see where Kenneth is talking about? There we go.
Yeah.
I can talk a little about project design and how we came up with the units, if that's helpful. Um, so originally, uh, the, the original effort was, uh, the entire project area was the whole parcel, the, the whole um, section. And so uh, paring it down from there, uh, focused on Ozzy's fire behavior modeling. Um, and then also needing to cut out areas that did not fall into or drain into Little Browns Creek. Um, I think uh, Amelia and Oz, Ozzy made mention of the funding source that required this be watershed restoration. So it needs to fall into that drainage. And then lastly, access and um, our, our maintenance options. So um, we chose this prominent ridge top that goes back down to Browns Mountain Road on unit five. Um, mainly for uh, the access and the ability to use the existing feature um, as a holding feature for um, future prescribed burning. Um, you know, I, ideally, we, we would want to include uh, the skid trail and um, the whole section, but uh, it, it came a point we needed, we needed to pare it down um, both for survey acres and uh, and our own capacity to, to get these acres treated.
Yeah, but I, I still don't understand why you're not uh, extending it out down that ridge. I mean, that's, that just seems like a logical thing. You've got this, this uh, power line that runs along that ridge all the way out to uh, where that south ridge top skid trail takes off. And why not just continue it on that, along that ridge?
And the, the, and the earlier slide that had the modeling seemed to indicate that as well.
True. And so, you know, there are other components to project design also. I'm sure you can see the drainage that that um, would incorporate. Um, we have obvious riparian buffers we need to follow. Um, by including that, that ridge, um, you know, it, it essentially, as, as I, it sounds like you know, walking it, it goes on to private property. And uh, the maintenance option there, there's, there's no very, there's no great access point moving back down to Browns Mountain Road. Um, we're going to impact that draw as we cross it. Um, there, there were, there were a few reasons why we cut it out. One, like I've already stated, uh, at some point, we needed to pare down the acres uh, overall. Um, so we can survey and treat them. Uh, and then two, um, because including this portion of the drainage um, was becoming real complex in our uh, project design. So um, yeah, like I had said, originally, we tried to include this entire section, but uh, you know, we, we needed, we needed to cater this treatment to what we can afford and what we can maintain. And so this is what we came up with.
How wide is that ridge top?
The existing.
Narrow. It's about, it's about a hundred feet wide and then it drops off pretty fast on both sides. The, the uh, east side has actually been uh, selected logged in the past. That's why there's a few skid trails that go down there. And the, the west side drops off uh, pretty fast and it's, it's uh, fairly open on the top. There's some big trees and then there's some small ladder fuels. And it, it would be a very uh, uh, easy thing to uh, do a little more work in there. The, the, the road is already in there, that skid trail. You can drive down that with a, a four-wheel drive vehicle. And uh, it would be a very simple thing that, and that where, where it comes into that yellow line, there's a big landing there. So it'd be very simple to uh, take out a few logs and, and remove a lot of the small diameter material on both sides for maybe a hundred feet or a hundred and fifty feet on both sides. And then you've got a really nice uh, shaded fuel break in there.
You know, we, we, we tend to stop fires at ridge tops. So I, just from the map perspective, I ha, I agree with Kenneth. And I'm gonna say that, you know, a pre-position ridge top fuel break would potentially be real beneficial.
Right. So I understand that. So the, the ridge top that we have chosen for uh, unit five that runs to the west highlighted in yellow, uh, it's also a ridge top feature because the existing power line infrastructure on it is annually maintained, um, is a current uh, holding feature as is. It's top, top of the ridge. Uh, it's very defendable and it has uh, high value infrastructure on it. Um, so that, that also came into account of why we chose to maintain that, that as our holding feature.
Okay, so other, other um, thoughts for Amelia, Rob and Ozzy at this point?
I, I've got two more to go. Is uh, one of them has to do with how you deal with snags uh, with, within the treatment area. I thought the, your snag language was kind of weak. And you know, I would suggest uh, dropping all snags that could be safely felled to uh, eliminate the threat from the snags within the treatment area. They'd still leave some because some could not be safely felled, but it would, it would make the, the unit much more uh, fire resilient g- given the uh, the way snags spread, spread fire. And then the other point is you're backing off all the riparian and it, and it seems like you could be setting yourself up for I don't know, less desirable. Those, those riparian areas become like wicks, you know, in the, in a wildfire and to leave them untreated, um, I think is going to weaken your, you know, your overall treatment. You could, there are things you can do in the riparian. You know, if, if it burns, the riparian's going to be likely cooked. Um, a lot of ours do burn because of the topography. So it, it seems like some kind of light dead fuel treatment. You know, keep your shade canopy, keep the fire resistant veget, under story vegetation, but uh, I think to back off completely is a mistake. Thank, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything else? I think you've got some food for thought um, from the collaborative. So.
I agree with John.
Okay. Thank you, Diana.
You're welcome.
Uh, any closing comments? Amelia, Ozzy, Rob?
Uh, yeah, just thank you. Thank you for, for all your comments. Um, a lot, a lot of it, I think, is going back to what Rob was saying. Like because of the funding source, um, is a grant that we have to the RCD to do the planning. Um, that's our main limitation is uh, the deadline on that funding source and the amount and a lot of. And a lot of the things that I think people brought up are truly good ideas that are are just costly to plan for, unfortunately. So we'll definitely take your comments. Thank you for for sharing them. And we'll definitely discuss them. But that is unfortunately a big limitation we come up against. So appreciate your understanding on that front as well. But thank you.
We'll look forward to Phase Two with new funding. So as a group, just kind of a touching base, it's about 12:15 on the agenda. We still had some updates on Burnt Ranch Pilot Project, which I know Jeremy Brown Supervisor Brown asked to have on the agenda. And the whole group had asked last time to get an update on the pilot project. So why don't we get a quick update, I presume, from Tara on Burnt Ranch? And then take on the pilot project and go on from there. And probably don't need to be sharing the Little Brown's Creek Creek map anymore. There we go.
Hey, sorry, I left room for a second.
Sure, Jeremy.
I'm just curious what what the status is of the pilot program? That's what we're talking about, right?
About the Little Browns pilot or the Burnt Ranch Pilot Project?
Correct.
Yeah. So I was asking Tara to kind of take the lead on that. It's from the Trinity River Management Unit.
And this is Bob preemptively. It's always been called the Burnt Ranch Community Fire Save Project. But I've seen, I've never seen it called a pilot project. I'd like to understand that as well.
My apologies. That goes back to when Tina first brought it to me in 2011. And it was called the Burnt Ranch Pilot Project.
Thanks.
Because it was going to be such an innovative new way of all lands treatment. The NRCS had money for equip. RCD had grant money to do private land, smaller parcels. And the Forest Service was going to take on the Forest Service land. So Tara.
Okay, well, first of all, thanks, Bob, because I, the the pilot project part got my attention as well. I hadn't heard it called that. So as you all know, the kind of the backstory on Burnt Ranch is that it it started down the road to be an EIS, went out for scoping. We received a number of comments back. Good, good comments. Glad, glad, glad we got them. There was some resistance from the the folks that actually live out there to to treat some of the vegetation closest to their property. And so the, and we kind of got out of the EIS business. We we kind of learned, we went through the, we had the fire come up, the tip firs. We did an EIS for that. That that took a great deal of time. And in the meantime, we've learned that an EIS is not a fast track tool to get to get to implementation. So that's kind of where Burnt Ranch has kind of sat out there while we've dealt with the various fire salvage efforts along the way. I will tell you that I've I've read through all the scoping comments and tried to begin to familiarize myself with the project itself. It seems like there's some opportunities out there. And I know this group in particular is is really focused on roads and plantations and and sees the opportunities that are there. So I have scheduled a meeting in April to go down with with the the ID team and the staff to to kind of get familiar with the the project on the ground and make sure that whatever we end up doing out there, we want it to be effective. So I want to go out and see, see the plantations for myself, see the roads. Also, I understand, you know, between when we, when we started this project and now we've, we've kind of learned the importance of making sure that we have appropriate clearance around power lines. And I understand there's, there's a number of infrastructure power lines out there as well. So my plan was to get out and take a look at it. See, see what what makes sense for an effective treatment to move it forward. And then to invite the collaborative back out there so that I can be, you know, be be very transparent, hear what you guys think and and move forward from there. But basically, it it started down the road towards an EIS, which is a very large lift from a planning standpoint. One that hasn't always been as successful as we might hope. And then it got, it kind of stopped. So I I would say that at this point, I'd be looking at moving it into more of an EA arrangement that could be focused and and get us towards implementation more quickly. I apologize for not being more familiar with the project. You know, I I've been fairly focused on August since I, since I took over the district this winter. So I'm certainly open to hear from all of you and what your thoughts are out there. But that's kind of where I'm at. It's it's on my radar and I'm looking forward to getting out and and kind of ground truthing it for myself.
Thank you, Tara. So Jeremy, any, any, anybody else, any comments, questions, thoughts? Joseph?
No, thanks for the update, Tara. Any communication you can do and keep me in the loop with is appreciated. And anything I can do to help keep it moving along. If there are specific land donors that have concerns and that's still going to be an applicable issue in your methodology moving forward, I can help potentially reach out to them and correspond. And I know probably most of the people in the Burnt Ranch area. So please utilize the resource if you need.
Great. I I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, anybody else, any other comments on the Burnt Ranch Community Protection Project?
I have a comment. This did come up during the Trinity County Community Wildfire Protection Plan process as well in our community meetings. And it seemed to have good support from those participants. So hopefully that will help as well as we just went through this planning, planning process.
Great. Thank, thank you, Amelia. That's good to know. Okay, so now the the pilot project. So update, I'm not sure if that is, I guess, Chris.
Folks, not much to say, but I anticipate getting the getting the draft EA out for public comment either later this month or early April. We actually drafted the legal notice just just yesterday. So it's it's pretty much ready. We just got a few more things to tie up and a few more I's to dot and T's to cross. But I anticipate this will be out later this month or early next month for public comment. That begins the 30 day comment period. Then we have a comment response. And if if everybody continues to be on board, there won't be a whole lot of, lot of comments to work on. And then we can start, we can start the objection process after we respond to those comments. I do want to respond to the comments. I think it's really important to 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 respond as much individually as possible to the to the concerns from the comments. So once we do that, then we can start the objection process. And then we're about 90 days out. You know, it's not, at this, at this time, we're planning, our hope is to get the, we feel we can get the decision signed by the end of the year. And then, end of the fiscal year, excuse me, end of the fiscal year. And then start putting together the timber sales right after that. That doesn't mean we're going to be able to sell anything this fall. But we're, we're going to be having, we should have a decision this fall. And then, once we can put the timber sales together, we'll, we'll have something hopefully ready in the middle of the fiscal, middle of fiscal 2020, which is like, you know, spring of 2022, 2022. That's all I have.
Okay, so any, any questions or comments for Chris? No? Okay, so because I was off for a little while, Kelly, is there other things that we missed? You're on, you're on mute.
Yeah, Pat, the only other thing that I think was requested at this point was Kathy Mick had a, had requested a couple of minutes just to sort of tidy up a few things with regard to the Six Rivers side of of things.
Okay.
Kathy, you still available?
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to mention, some of you might have seen our press release, something that the Six Rivers is very excited about, something Ted and I are working together on because, you know, he'll be back shortly. We're very excited about it. We're still uncertain as to which county it ultimate, the ultimate tree will come from. But, you know, the Six Rivers does have the Capitol Christmas tree this year. And we also have the responsibility for delivering the companion trees that'll go to a lot of the congressional offices. So we're still working, you know, the weather's kind of shut us out with the snow and whatnot. But we're still working. And I know, you know, this is Trinity County Collaborative. But I would like to ask that hopefully those of you that are interested, that you rally behind the Six Rivers and participate where you feel you would like and get the word out. That's what the big ask is, is to help get the word out and to support the Capitol Christmas tree coming from the Six Rivers. And we're, we're super excited, the employees, even though they're, you know, folks are focusing on August Complex. That is another project that we we must deliver on. We can't have the Capitol going without a tree at Christmas time. And so, yeah, just looking for all of you to help support us in any way you see fit and get the word out and, you know, help us enjoy this really exciting time on the Six Rivers. So thanks. That's all I really wanted to share. And then if folks, you know, really want to dig in, we can get it on an agenda and share more about it. Or you can give me a call. We do have a coordinator. Her name is Nancy Henderson. And, you know, we're, we've got a lot of support from the state and and some of our private partners. So we're, it's something we're super excited about. So thank you for the time.
Cool. Thank you, Kathy. That's great.
Yeah, I have other questions. This is Jerry. Kathy, how many other trees go along with it for all the other offices?
That we're still, Jerry, trying to determine that. It could be on the low side around 70 and then the upward side around 100 and 130. We're, we're still trying to ascertain exact numbers. Some of that has to, has to do with just the the security and ability to to deliver the trees and and who wants to, you know, who wants to participate. But but right now, we're talking about 80 or 90 companion trees. And in the past, the, the, in the past, there seems to have been for years now an effort to to purchase those trees. But in talking about it, Ted and I felt that it was super important that those companion trees also come from the Six Rivers as as well. So each ranger district has taken up that mantle and will deliver in equal proportions the number of trees that that we need. And so we're very, very excited about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're coming towards the end.
Hey, Pat?
Yeah, go ahead. Larry?
This is Larry. I'd just like to give a shout out to Dan Osman, who's going to be leading us. I want to congratulate him for his new position that he'll be taking, though it'll be our loss. I really enjoyed working with him and that I just want to wish him the best. And and if we could get a quick update from Chris on the Hyam Palm Project and now that Dan will be leaving, how that will play into the scheduling of getting the planning done here?
Sure, Larry. So Chris?
Hi, Larry. Yeah, you know, the Hyam Palm Project is really important. And, you know, I I recognize that. And I think, you know, but but with the August fire, we recognize, you know, we, there are some things we we needed to do right away and this year. And and my hope is that starting, I believe actually that starting next calendar year, we'll be able to really give some full throated support and 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 energy to to Hyam Palm. Once, but from the planning perspective, you know, once the pilot has been signed, once August Complex Phases One and Two have been signed, I think we can really put a lot of muscle into into the the Hyam Palm Project. I am actually really interested in seeing what happens as well with the Patterson Wilderness Proposal. I heard that it did pass the Congress recently. And so that might have some, that will likely have some effect. Whether it's passed or not, it'll have some effect on on our planning out there. But but yeah, you know, thanks for mentioning that. That's definitely on my, on my radar. And I, I think that once, once Phase Two and Pilot are are finished from a planning perspective, that we can really devote our, you know, a lot of energy to that.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, yes. Okay, so this is a spot where if there are members of the public, people are not active members of the collaborative, they have some input. It's a time for doing that. So is there anybody? No? Okay. Facilitation team, I don't have anything major to report on. Do you, Kelly?
I'm sorry. What was that?
Anything from the facilitation team? Do you have anything to report?
No.
Okay, well, it makes that easy. Agenda building. So we've had one suggestion from Joseph.
We also had another, another from Diane Richards.
Okay, what was, what was that one?
About the killing of barred owls by various, you know, entities as a treatment to, I guess, maintain or sustain the NSO population.
So are there any other agenda items other than our usual updating kind of things that people want to see? Our next meeting would be May 21st.
Here, this is Susan. And the Cannabis Committee does have an encouraging report from Larry Glass that I don't think will take very long, but it's encouraging if we have the time.
Let's, let's hear it then.
Mary? Uh-oh, did he disappear?
I'm still here, but I didn't know, I didn't, it wasn't on the agenda. I don't have it up on my screen. So if there's something else people can talk about for a second, I'll get it up on my screen.
Here, we'll, we'll talk, we'll continue to talk about other agenda items for the May meeting while you're getting ready, Larry.
I've got, it's, it's probably an issue. It's more of an idea. And the reason why I'd want to bring it to the collaborative is because it would involve a lot of agencies being involved if it could theoretically happen. And essentially, I'm I'm curious what the feasibility is for putting in standing waves in certain locations in the the river. And if you're not familiar with standing waves, they're essentially a recreational activity building by installing things like a large rock in the river or two large rocks and a slatted board in between that can be adjusted for different flow rates. And it makes a surfable wave that kayakers can use boogie boarders, regular ocean surfers, things like that. And they're becoming increasingly popular around the world, around the state, around the North Coast. A lot of the designs have been found to increase the ecology and fish habitat. And there's some really neat examples out there. I'd be happy to put together a little presentation. But the, you know, the goal for for my interest being to increase river activity, recreation and tourism opportunity and diversity with the year round surfing waves for outdoor enthusiasts. And to see a wave go in in the reservation in Hoopa, one in Willow Creek at Kintu, one in Junction City at the Restoration Programs Feature Site, and one in Lewiston, and maybe even one Big Flat. There have all been sites identified that have the gradient required to install these. And so to be able to run by kind of all the agencies at one time and get their opinion would be valuable to me. So I don't know if it's something I could bring to the collaborative, but that's something that came to mind.
Okay, folks, okay with that for next meeting?
Yeah, surfs up. Who knew? Yeah, search up, who knew?
So Jeremy, just out of curiosity, has this been broached with the Trinity River management folks?
I have discussed the Restoration Program and what I was told is their current engineer that does the permitting for their river work and especially for the one that they have planned for Junction City. The permit does allow the activity that's required to install this wave. So theoretically, there's already an opportunity for the permitting to have been approved for one to go in Junction City. So yeah.
Okay. So anything, anybody, anything else to add for the next agenda? Recognizing we try to keep this to two, two and a half hours.
I'm ready to go now.
Didn't Joseph have? Which Larry?
Larry Glass.
Didn't Joseph come up with something earlier about reevaluating collaborative priorities?
And I, I would suggest that be a, an action item, review of our stewardship goals.
Right. Okay. So Larry Glass was going to give us an update on a cannabis thing and then Larry Winter.
Okay, so I I sit on the board of a group called CROP, which is Cannabis Removal on Public Lands, a representative environmental group in Northern California. Anyways, we've been working with Congressman Lamalfer and Congressman Huffman to get this act passed by Congress. We've now managed to get the hardest part of the bill approved, and that's the appropriations part. It's, it's easy to pass things in Congress that don't have any money attached to them. Once you attach money to them, it becomes really difficult. But now we've got an appropriations language approved and it's for twenty five million dollars for each of the fiscal years, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty seven. And this would build a reclamation capacity at the local and regional level up to five million dollars a year for each of those fiscal years. And that, basically, we're talking about cleaning up these trespass growth sites that are on federal lands. Right now, there's just not enough money to do all the cleanup that's needed. And one of the great outcomes of cleaning up the site, the obvious one of cleaning the site up is that generally when these sites are cleaned up, the the trespasses don't return again the next growing season. So I just wanted to alert you about that. This, this bill is called the Plant Act and it'll eventually have to go through all the rigmarole that bills have to go through in the House. But at least we've done an appropriation approved for it now.
Great. That is, that is great news. Okay. Any questions of Larry?
Larry, this is, this is Nick Colet. I'm thinking i- is more likely that you're having authorization for appropriation in that bill, right? And not an actual appropriation. It's not a budget bill. It's really a a bill to create the authorization to allow Congress to fund that in the future. And then Congress each year would have to basically appropriate the money into the into the fund or the account. Does that, does that sound right? Or do you think it's actually an appropriation of funding?
Right, right. It's because the bill hasn't even passed yet. So technically, I'm sure you're right. I, I admit that I don't fully understand the appropriation process anyway. But I know that this is a big, a big moment for us to at least get this committee to sign off on what we were asking for.
Great. It would create like the bucket, the buckets, put the money in. And then, yeah, we can advocate for getting it into annual budgets and appropriations. That's, that's great. Thanks.
Okay, great. Larry Winter, did you have something else?
No, I didn't. I just wanted to make sure Joseph's item was on there.
Gotcha. And it is. Okay, anybody, anything else?
Hey, on the, on Larry's item, is the, is the thing to review the bylaws or is there another document? Or maybe just the facilitation team could could be sure to send around what it is we're reviewing?
Yeah, I was going to give Joseph to ask him to help, help us fine tune that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, if nothing else, I want to thank everybody for their time, the extra time they donated today to a longer collaborative meeting. And we've got two action items, which were both letters that we'll start to work on. And we'll keep you posted. Enjoy the sunshine while it's sunny.
All right, thanks, thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Goodbye, like.
Yeah.
Hey, Pat?
Yeah.
Hold on.
I'm sticking, I'm staying on.